One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, item number three. Are the minutes from August 7th, 2019, have a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a mo— I'll make a motion to accept.
A second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to postpone. I just haven't had a chance to look at them.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'll second to table the minutes.
Any further discussion on postponing? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item four, resignations. This is for information only from the Land Acquisition Commission. Jill Brown, Democrat, 1112 Holland Hill Road, term of 1117 to 1121. Resignation date was August 2nd, 2019. Next up, item five, to hear a report on Code Red signup September from the chief.
So, is our poster for signup September. September is emergency preparedness month. And as you know, the town of Fairfield has a Code Red system that allows residents to sign up to receive notification, not only for emergencies, but also for informational purposes, things like road paving, road closures, detours, and event information. We need to be constantly mindful of the fact that new residents move in. People with cellphone numbers or cellphones rely almost 100% on their cellphones, and the number of landlines that are automatically added to the system decrease every year. So every year we want to refresh our list and encourage residents to sign up for Code Red. We've added a new feature to the Code Red system this year which allows them to text Fairfield alerts to 99411. It gives them the same functionality as the signup through the website, which is FairfieldCT.org/CodeRed. And they get to make all of their choices, whether they receive all alerts, just emergency alerts, whether they register home phones, cellphones, email addresses to get that information. It's a critical part of our emergency preparedness message. And many times, the only way we're getting the word to residents about the status of the town, what they can do to prepare, what they can do to react, what services available to them, is through the Code Red system. So we wanted to come to the Board of Select— I wanted to come to the Board of Selectmen tonight as a way to extend our publicity for signup September and the Code Red system. So that is it in a nutshell, but I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight with this information.
Chief, thank you. Any comments from the board?
Thank you, chief, for coming. How many people are currently on the Code Red call list?
So we have 34,000 phone numbers. That's a combination of home and cellphone. In a typical townwide emergency, we reach somewhere in the mid-20s, 20,000, 25,000, of which some 10,000 are text messages. So we do have a very robust list, but like I say, that new phone numbers get added every day, and unless residents go in and actually sign up for it, they won't get the message on that phone.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Chief, I'd just like to say thank you. I found this tool very handy and very informative over the years, and I'd encourage the general public to sign up.
Very good.
Just, have you worked with any groups? One thought comes to mind, the Greater Fairfield Porter Realtors that are obviously working with buyers when they come to town, it would seem that might be a natural fit for them to encourage people to sign up to Code Red because those are the new people coming in.
Certainly will reach out to them. We have, through our emergency management team, which involves the universities, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Red Cross, we have publicized this, but I'll certainly reach out to Realtors as well.
The other question would be, are we coordinating with the registrar voters? Because that might be the other way when people are moving in, that we catch them as part of that.
We'll do that as well.
Okay, very good.
Good suggestions.
No, thank you. Very important part of our safety response.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, to hear an update from the Sustainable Fairfield Task Force on National Drive Electric Week. Here we go. Those are two familiar faces.
I'd like to point out Mary Hoag is at another Board of Select meeting. Basically a regular member.
That's newsworthy, isn't it? Hi, I'm Mary Hoag. And Scott Thompson is the Chair of the Sustainable Fairfield Task Force. And on September 14th, we're having our fifth annual National Drive Electric Week event. We've rechristened it Green Wheels Expo. It's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the commuter overflow lot across from the Sports Box, but if you put in 140 Millplain Road, your navigation system will get you there. This year, we're excited because we're having at least one EV bus. It's a bus from White Plains, which I believe is an all-electric bus fleet in White Plains, New York. It's pretty exciting. And that's especially important because the diesel fumes around our school kids is just really not a healthy thing. So we're excited that the Fairfield Board of Ed and Admin is interested in coming. And of course, we have, I think we have up to about 40 individuals bringing their cars for people to view, and we have about six local dealers coming to give ride and drives. Mo Green is coming with their electric lawn equipment. I think we're going to get electric motorcycles and outboard motors for boats again. We'll have several tables of hands-on activities for people to better understand how their transportation and energy choices affect their world and their health in the world. We'll have two food trucks. What else are we doing? Anything else?
Aquarium.
Oh, aquarium water truck. Here, just pick up. What else are we doing? I can't think of anything else. But that's an awful lot. It's a lot of fun. We get several hundred people coming. Anyone wants to volunteer, give us a call. We need a little help mending those tables. Oh, lots of nonprofits to help you understand how to finance your electric vehicle or your alternative energy choices, how to do ride shares, how to use mass transit, lots of how to advocate and understand more about what's going on in our state legislature and locally. So lots of interesting, fun stuff.
Good.
Yeah, I would just add one other point about the electric buses. We've kind of been in the modern era of electric cars for about 10 years, but now we're coming into really the era of electric buses coming into their own. And so, of course, the usual arguments about cheaper to operate and cheaper life cycle apply. One of the things that's really exciting about the electric buses, they're becoming part of the smart grid. So you're seeing utility providers actually deploy these electric buses on the grid for energy storage to reduce those peaks and valleys that are applied from renewable energy on the grid. So it's a really exciting aspect to the technology, and I'd be happy to share more to anyone that wants to talk about that.
Okay. Gentlemen?
So, I mean, I want to give a plug to you guys for all you do in promoting this stuff. I know green energy is the with future. I see more and more of it start slowly getting integrated into our society. But there's also, you know, some big sponsors who help you out with this too. I don't know if you want to give a plug to them while we're here.
Yeah, this year, our keynote sponsors, I would say, are U-I is a big contributor, as is Maritime Chevrolet. And so they're helping fund things like the tents and tables and the Port of Johns and the signs and some of the literature. So, yeah, we would definitely want to thank you for that note to give a shout out to those key sponsors. And there's a bunch of other ones that are on our flyer, too.
So, two other things. One, is there a rain date in case it does rain on September 14th? No rain date. And then, how many people do you usually expect? How many came last year?
About 200.
About 200, okay. All right, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Good to see you there.
Good job, guys. I look forward to being there.
Now, we'll be able to drive an electric vehicle again this year, right? Because that's always a thrill doing that. You mentioned electric buses. I tend to think in terms of school buses when you say that. We also have kind of quasi-buses that the senior center uses for transport. Would that style of bus be available in an electric model?
Yeah, it's not just school buses. There are transit buses, as well as smaller transit buses that are all merging onto the market. And some states are very big into it. California, Massachusetts, Virginia is coming online. And we're aware of an initiative in Bridgeport for transit buses as well, and that is through one of the COGS.
Interesting. Okay. We do have a proclamation here that we don't want you to go away empty-handed, that we're declaring September 14th through 22nd, 2019, is Drive Electric Week throughout the town of Fairfield. So let's get a gentleman, let's get a picture taken with that for you, so we can officially present this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your efforts, and I know that it's not only the time at meetings, but it's all the time you spend researching and getting educated, and I know reaching out to other towns and communities around that that really make a difference. So thank you for all the hours that included in that. Next up, Director of Public Works, to hear an update on the Rooster River Flood Control Study. Mr. Hurley.
Good evening, or good afternoon, Selectmen. I'm Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager, and we're here today to prevent—the provide the Board of Selectmen an update on the Rooster River Detention Feasibility Assessment. The town hosted three public meetings in the spring of 2019 with various neighborhoods regarding the Rooster River flooding that occurred back in September and October 2018. We plan on meeting with the neighborhoods and hosting another public meeting probably sometime this fall. We have our consultants here from Malona McBroom to provide an updated presentation, and let me introduce James Merrick and Ted Hart. So if you guys want to, we could start right into it. We're figuring about maybe a 15-minute. If you want us to condense it, we can go quicker.
15 minutes should be good.
Okay.
So we've got this for you guys. I don't know if you have to enter this in. It's sort of something to take home. It's got our presentation in it, which was initially a little bit of a longer format than 15 minutes, but this probably works a little bit better. And we also have—it's a lot of information to present. We have our full report, it's a 30-page report, in there for you guys to cruise. We have a lot of graphics of the seven sites that we analyzed at the end of that packet in Section 4. Then Section 3 has—I'm sorry, Section 4 has some positive news. So there's a lot of data. I'd like to maybe go through it at a high level with you guys.
All right.
And then field any questions, if you guys want to go. So I'll start in Section 1. I've got sort of the slideshow that's printed out, and if you guys—if you want to follow along, you're free to. Some of this is background information of Rooster River. I think you guys are pretty familiar. It's 15 miles long, starts up in Trumble, follows the Bridgeport line, ends in Ash Creek. This study was a little bit unique in that a lot of times, we would start with defining a problem and saying, let's try to find solutions to a specific, maybe flooding area or specific street. But I think flooding along Rooster River is so prolific, it really didn't make as much sense as coming at it from a more pointed perspective and saying, you know, talks with Public Works, saying, we've identified these potential sites that might provide some opportunities for benefit by retaining water. So why don't we look at those rather than try to track down all of the individual flooding issues? So a few—so really, we use sort of public data, we use LiDAR data, TownTopo, and we were just really assessing all of these seven sites. Some of you guys have already flipped to this map. So this is the sites—that these are the seven sites that we looked at, most of which were municipal land. And then it also shows these blue dots along here, which are some of the reported flooding locations. So it's a dense map, there's a lot to get through.
I can highlight the seven real quick, just so people know that we're talking about if they're watching. Tungus Hill Park is one of the sites that's the lower Rooster River watershed. The Senat property or the former Diocese property off of Villa Avenue. The Brooklawn Country Club was looked at. Melville Park, Owen Fish Park, the Woodfield Village, and Fairchild Wheeler Country Club. So hopefully, everybody knows where they are, and if not, they can always call Engineering to find out more. Thanks.
So this map also shows a black dotted line where it can, and those are the boundaries of the watersheds. In some instances, it's off the page, so you can't see the full watershed. But when you talk about detention and the ability to detain, you have to imagine that entire watershed all being rained upon all the same time, all that water making its way down to the outlet in Ash Creek. And so the timing is super important, because when you have flood higher in the watershed and you're able to detain that, that could be very helpful for people downstream. But if you're in the very lower levels of a river and you start detaining water, you may be holding that water back and realigning it with water that's coming from further upstream. So this list on the next page kind of goes through the factors that we were looking at each of these sites. Flood flow timing, what I was just describing, being one of them and one of the more important ones. We looked at each of the sites for their soils and how permeable they were. We did an estimate based on the contours of how much volume we could store, how much volume of water we could store on those sites. We looked at impacts to the land use, because some of them are public parks. They have athletic fields, ballfields that people may not want to lose, regular resources like wetlands, and how difficult permitting may be to do construction on those properties, and at the property ownership, if they're municipal or private properties. So just jumping right into the first site, Tungus Hill Park. So there's known flooding to occur in the Nordstrand Avenue Ave, which is just to the southeast of this park. And this site has been looked at in the past by other engineering companies, but not exactly in this vein. So we show here on this map, it shows where we would look to detain water is sort of in the forested area outside of the outfield. In your Section 3 on the first page is a more detailed map of that same area, and whether you guys want to get into that now or at the end, we can do that certainly. But we drew sketches of what that would look like, what the impacts would look like.
If I may, just the difference from the last time, back in 2007, we had looked at it, and basically was to create a bowl or a big, large detention pond. It was not looked upon favorably by the wetlands. It would cut about half the trees that were in the park. This way, with a berm, we would be able to save a significant number of trees rather than the other. So we think this is a little bit more environmentally friendly form of detention than previous.
So it would involve constructing a berm right along the outfield line and holding the water. It's a wetland up in those woods now anyway, where a few tributaries come through the woods. So we'd berm that and create some sort of an outlet control structure, a concrete structure that would detain. So in a storm, that area would fill up with water up to—I think we said up to five feet deep, and then detain that water there and slowly release it. So it would slowly release it to the drainage system downstream into Nordstrand and all those roads down there that flood now. But because you were able to detain—we calculated 77% of a 10-year event volumetrically, all of it. Those flows may actually be significant enough to prevent flooding in even larger storms, maybe even 100-year storms. We haven't run all of those calculations because it was a little more detailed than this analysis, but there's certainly the potential for that.
So releasing the water, would that be like, you know, almost like a title gate-type situation, but a specific pipe going in there? You retain it until the water at the Rooster River has, you know, gone back to normal levels, then—I mean, what's the mechanism for slowly releasing it?
A smaller orifice than the water is entering. So if like, if you have a large underground pool and you've got a pipe this large discharging water into it, but the hole at the bottom of it where water can come out is this big, it's going to rise and rise and rise because it can't get enough water out until you cut off the inflow, and then it'll just slowly continue to drain until it's empty.
So it's just a smaller pipe?
Yeah.
Okay. And then just real quick, just in case someone's not familiar with some of these terms. To help avoid flooding, there's usually two simple methods. One would be to enlarge pipes and send it downstream further. That's great if the downstream area can handle it. For a Rooster River area, if we were to quickly or just oversize pipes, we would be bombing other sections of Rooster River down by the Turnpike or down, you know, further than that even, by Route 1 and by the Turnpike, you know, down lower areas. The other is to detain or hold back the water. The further you go up on a watershed and you hold back the water, you're giving enough time for the water, say mid watershed and lower watershed, to get out and then release it. So that's another way of providing some flood relief. The detention is by far the least controversial way and most effective way to try to alleviate some of the flooding. So I just wanted to make that clear. I hope I did.
So we have a couple of graphics in here after Site 1 that we have a cutaway that shows sort of a typical dry detention area and what it looks like when it fills, and the outlet control structure, which is that mechanism that allows the flows to be regulated. And then what a grass berm would look like, just for visual purposes. Moving down to Site 2, that is a private property on Villa Ave. It is currently very low-lying, it's flood prone, so it looks like some wet areas. So it was a little bit too low. You can't excavate into a wet area and gain any storage because it's already wet. So it wasn't really a good candidate for detention. But we did—in speaking of Public Works, did identify that there was some drainage issues in adjacent roadways that maybe that property could be utilized as a wet detention or a constructed wetland area to more effectively discharge some of those just roadway drainage issues. So it really wasn't part of the study, we just sort of recommended that as a future assessment.
And that's Elgonquin Road area, trying to reduce the flood.
The third site we looked at was Brooklawn Country Club. It's directly adjacent to the Rooster River. The area that was identified as being a potential area is sort of a rougher area in the golf course operations, but it's too small. Based on our assessment, it doesn't provide meaningful detention to the river. It would fill up almost immediately in a flood event, and it wouldn't provide a substantial enough detention to really merit all the impacts and the costs associated with it. So we didn't recommend that for further consideration. The fourth site we looked at was Melville Playground. This was another instance where we were looking to detain water in the woods next to a ballfield. It's already owned by the town of Fairfield. The grade is steeper out here where the existing water course is, so the berm height would be larger than in the other instances, an average of seven feet high, but with what we were looking at here, a maximum of 15 feet high, which is a very large berm. But it does provide storage for 100% of the time. So it's—if the town has the appetite of pursuing that, then that is something we thought was feasible.
And that would also help the Littlebrook Road neighborhood, who—that was one of the neighborhoods that we had met with earlier. By enlarging perhaps one or two sections of pipe in that area and providing this detention, we could help that neighborhood out without bombing down, you know, downstream. So that's why this was important. And then I just want to—because I'll talk a little bit about it later, but it also says here, recommend for further study and design. Like he had said, if it's a seven-foot-high average berm, you have to go through your regular permits or whatever. But if it's 15-foot-high, it's a significant—it would be a flood control structure, we'd have to go to the Army Corps of Engineers, we'd have to go to the DVP, and it's a whole nother level. So that's something, you know, the next phase, if we go to the next phase to take a look at the different aspects of it. In other words, do we want 100% protection, but it's going to mean this, this, and additional permitting, and obviously more construction costs? Or are we looking at, you know what, we would at least provide a benefit for 80% of the situation, but it would be less costly and less permanent, stuff like that.
So the fifth site we looked at was Owen Fish Park. So that—so we did identify this as being feasible. The berm height that would be required was much lower, it was only like three feet, and there was an appreciable amount of volume available here, 63% of the 10-year flood, which is appreciable. The thing that should be discussed with this particular site is that we would actually be using the outfields of the athletic field, of the baseball fields, as the storage. So they would flood with some regularity. So I know they're heavily used, they're very popular fields. That's something that would have to be considered with that alternative. You know, we could look at putting under drains in those fields to help them drain more quickly or help them dry out so that they can be used after they are flooded, but there would be days where they wouldn't be able to be used if that was something that was implemented.
This would be probably—this is probably the most controversial of the sites. We do get a good bang for the buck, so to speak, for it. But as you know, from recreation all the time, there always lack of, you know, playing field space. And then, you know, if we got a significant rainfall where that field might be out of commission for, I don't know, two to five days or something like that, is definitely something to consider.
Bill, I would add that I think the flooding of Brooklawn Golf Course would be also controversial to the members of Brooklawn.
Right, but as you mentioned before, that was one that they're not recommending, just to let you know, the Brooklawn. It was—it just wasn't worth it, it was too much. So you are recommending this one?
We're recommending that it works from a technical perspective. It has to work from the town's perspective as well. You just have to agree that that's something that you want to pursue. We can't make that decision, but technically, it works. It is feasible.
And just to be clear, if something like Brooklawn did work, it would still be up to the property owner to give us permission to do this. So it's nothing the town can take, per se.
Correct.
It has to be done in cooperation with the owner.
That's funny how you mention that, because the next site is privately owned.
So two left. The sixth site we looked at was Woodfield Village. It's a condo complex. It's up—we're starting to get up into the watershed, farther up into the watershed where storage becomes more effective. There were two detention basins, maybe more, but at least two that were constructed when Woodfield Village was built. And we looked at utilizing one of them. So just from our assessment of—in the field, looking at it, there's a large berm, kind of like what we've been proposing. There's a concrete outlet control structure, kind of like what we've been proposing, and a sluice gate, and the sluice gate is open. And it doesn't look like it's really throttling flows. Looks like the flows are kind of coming in, coming out. We, in our experience, would have assumed that that would have been—that gate would be further closed so that it does fill up with more water. So we think it's not being utilized to its full efficiency. So there's really not a construction project, per se, but so much as obtain the original design, engineering design of that basin, assess it for what it was designed for, see how—and compare that to how it's operating. And maybe there's some opportunity to either bring it up to what its original design was or even bring it further and get more storage out. So that's more of an assessment that we think could be done. And again, it is privately owned, so you would have to work with Woodfield Village to get permission for that.
Again—
But it's a low-hanging fruit. I mean, there's really very little cost to that.
Yeah, that—this is probably the easiest one to implement, but again, it goes without saying the town would have to have several meetings with the condominium association. They'd have to be on board. There might even have to be a transfer of an easement, because right now, they're responsible for maintaining and doing everything. If this were to be more of a watershed detention pond than just the detention pond for their site, you know, we'd have to look into that. But every step along the way, we'd be working with the condominium association. We would never throw—you know, force anything down their throats or anything like that.
And then the final area was the seventh site, that was Fairchild Wheeler Country Club. So we know, back in our original map that identified a lot of the Rooster River flooding areas, Windwood Drive, Casimir Drive were heavily impacted. We spoke to some of the landowners along that area, and water from the Country Club along this water, along Rooster River, had overtopped a culvert that it was supposed to get into and gone over land through yards down the road. So we would look at—that area already floods. We would look at formalizing that flooding area, putting up a berm and control structure, maybe even increasing that flooding area, and trying to detain that to keep it off of the roads. The—it's my understanding that Public Works had initiated conversations with the city Bridgeport, who owns the Country Club, and so there was some communication about that, but it is—it's not town of Fairfield. It's municipal, but it's just not this municipality. But I think there was some interest in cooperating on that.
Yeah. This one here, when we talk about like bang for the buck, or this one here provides almost everybody in the watershed in the town of Fairfield and the city of— everybody in the watershed, in the town of Fairfield and the city of Bridgeport, protection.
One of the best sites that we found.
It helps, you know, without, with minimal harm, because it's at the upper watershed, so holding that water back would be a tremendous benefit for anybody in the watershed. Now, it might be one of the more costly, you know, ones to construct, but being that it's in the, it's shared, it's in the city of Bridgeport, but, you know, we'd work together with the town of Fairfield, the city of Bridgeport, it is something that both municipalities are definitely interested in.
Once you hold it there, how does it get out? You talked about some different control structures down when you talked about the Tungstus Hill Fields. How about this one?
There's many different designs that could be utilized, but we would, just for the purposes of the concept analysis, we were sort of envisioning what was at Brookfield. So actually, if you want to take a ride to Brookfield at some point and take a look at their outlet control structure, it'll give you a good visual. But picture a large catch basin that's elevated out of the ground with a smaller, with some sort of a sluice gate or something to control how the water enters it. And so as water, as water becomes deeper and it's becoming more detained, it gets to a certain point where the inlet can't withstand it anymore, and it overtops the structure before overtopping the berm, the dam.
The best way would be is the volume doesn't change, but what happens is the rate of that release changes. That's what causes the flooding typically. So if we hold back several thousands of or millions of gallons, whatever it is, and we release it at a constant rate, then the pipe systems and the streams below or the riverbed can handle it, as opposed to, they call it a hydrograph, where, you know, the worst or the most intense 30 minutes of the storm is what usually does the area in. So by releasing it at a slower rate, over a longer period of time, the systems can handle it. And that's the whole purpose of detention. Usually, for most detention areas, 24, the goal is to have it, quote, "dry" within 24 hours. Maybe on some of these larger ones, it's 48 hours. But, you know, after it stops raining, then the system should be able to handle it, and then that's when you can just constantly release the flow.
So that concludes our presentation. Happy to field questions, and then we gave you a bunch more fun data that you can sink your teeth into. But we have our report in Section 2, the concept sketches, which I think actually will be helpful to visualize this in Section 3, and the cost estimates in Section 4.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes. What, so what's the next step? I mean, approval process, funding? Are you asking us to make a pitch to which ones of these we like and are asking you to pursue? What are you asking us?
Oh, yeah. Well, actually, that's what, this was just for at least an update, as I said, we kind of promised the Board of Selectmen back in the spring and to the public that we would at least provide updates, rather than do it during the summer. We figured we'd do it in some time in September here. So that's what we're doing now. There will be most likely future funding requests to expand, I think there were at least four or five that are being recommended, where they might need further engineering analysis and study. One thing, like for instance, the Melville Park one, I'm sorry--
Owen Fish.
Oh, no, the other one, down by Nordstrom Tungstus Hill.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about--
No, no. That one there is important, because that's one of the lower watersheds. But that neighborhood gets bombed out, Villa Place, Villa Avenue, and Nordstrand. What you don't want to do is release the water, hold the water back, and then release it at the same time that the rest of the watershed is coming down, because you could actually make it worse. So on that particular one, that's something that we couldn't really do in-house. We'd have to hire, you know, an engineering firm to do that. You don't want to fool around with some of these. Some of the other ones, the minor ones, we might be able to do in-house if we have the time and whatever. It really is, the future funding request would be for expanded and more detailed designs, and then eventually, potential construction, if we thought the public was in favor of certain ones. We mentioned the private ownership. If the private owners are receptive to these measures, if there's somehow some improvements for them as well, then they'd be more inclined, obviously, to be on board with that. And then we have to decide, basically, whether we would have them design a group, you know, all of them, or a small group, or one at a time. And the same thing with the construction, you know, whether we would construct, you know, do we do one a year for the next five years? Or, you know, are we able to do two or three, or maybe even all five in a one- or two-year span? And that's where, later on, they have the probable costs, and these are the first, you know, stabs at the construction costs that we have. So that's what we wanted to present to the--
Mr. Bateson?
Yeah. Quick. Sorry, quick thing. This schedule.
Summary?
That one? Summary of potential storage?
No, no. The cost estimates are the ones--
No, I'm just pointing you to this one. I just want to interpret this correctly. It says 100-year, 50-year, 25-year, 10-year. Is that storms?
Yes.
Okay, so if I read this correctly, it says Site 4, Melville. It can retain everything up to 100-year flood.
Correct.
So why would we build five of them if one solves the problem?
So it's a 100-year flood on the tributary to the Rooster, not on the main stem of the Rooster.
Say that again?
So that is 100%. So as the Rooster River goes up into the watershed, there's multiple tributaries.
Yep.
So this is really just one of the smaller tributaries to the Rooster that is detaining water for. So it's not a measure of the Rooster River flow, it's a measure of the tributary flow.
Okay, that did make sense. Doesn't solve my problem.
Well, it would for that, for that particular sub watershed, right? If you imagine that there's several sub waters--
Something in here that looks at the total watershed, or the Rooster River itself.
To do that would have been an analysis more complicated than this on order of five times. I mean, to really computationally go through every single location in a watershed and assess timing is a really complicated endeavor. This was a really high-level type of look, because we just couldn't dial down into that.
Let me--
It would take a whole computer model that would take most of it.
Let me try Mr. Bateson's question perhaps another way. You did all of these. What percentage of the Rooster River flow does it capture? Does it help?
Yeah, that's the, firstly, same answer. That's why I was, in the beginning, I wanted to make clear that what our scope was and what we were working with, because that's the natural question to ask, but we don't have that answer for it, unfortunately.
Okay. On this, we've got, Site 2 is not applicable. Site 3 is listed on this, but we say we're not considering that. Is that--
So Site 2 was just not considered for detention, but there were drainage updates or upgrades that we pursued there.
And Site 3, we said we weren't going to consider going forward.
That's right, yeah. Brooklawn, there was, the cost benefit was not even close.
This shows you that, I mean, 13% of the two-year, this shows you why. Really, a rule of thumb for that would be 10% of a 10-year, when you're starting to get into something that's appreciable. If you can't even achieve that, it's not worth pursuing.
And again, for that September storm, you know, eight inches in four hours, I mean, we've never even been close to that before. The, you know, the big one that we used to compare was 1971 or '02, Hurricane Agnes, I think dropped seven inches of rain in a 24-hour period. And that was the worst that we had, you know.
That's what the Connecticut DOT was, as a 100-year.
Yeah, and that was--
Seven inches in a 24-hour period.
Yeah, that was there--
It's a little outdated, it's more than that now, but--
With climate change, it's now 8.4 for this area, 8.3, 8.4.
Wow. All right, any further questions from the board?
I was just going to say, so each group, you know, would be an improvement, and that's, we're not going to be able to, some of these homes are, were built back in the '30s or '50s in 100-year floodplain. We can't eliminate the problem, but what we can do is, like for instance, that one that I mentioned, Fairchild Wheeler, where we can help the situation. So maybe if an area's been getting flooded, say, five times in the last 20 years, maybe that number goes to once or twice in 20 years. And that's, that's what we're looking for. And in some cases, the one maybe was once, 20 years now is going to be zero, because we provided that detention. So, you know, each neighborhood is different.
Good. Any further comments from the board?
No. Thanks, Bill.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Excellent. And I know I sat through a number of these as earlier versions of this, but it's very well-done in terms of putting all this together. Thank you.
And then the other thing, when we do have the public meeting, you know, I don't know if you've ever had, you know, PowerPoints or whatever, or the boards and all that kind of stuff. When we have the public hearing, they typically last an hour to two hours. We can go a lot more detail, we can answer specific questions, and we'll have, you know, areas and watersheds and maps. For this year, we wanted to keep it short, so that's why we didn't do that.
Yeah, Bill, you got to get out more. We have PowerPoints at every meeting but yours.
I apologize. I do got to get out more. Thanks.
Thank you again. All right, next up, Item 8, from the Chief Fiscal Officer, to hear, consider, and approve an independent audit review of financial controls and processes related to DPW transactions. Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Basically, the Board of Finance at their, at a special meeting passed a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, to engage the auditors, O'Connor Davies, PKF O'Connor Davies, to do a financial and operational audit of DPW activities as a result of the issues that have come into question as a result of the arrest warrants that have been issued. They would cover purchases, transactions, vendor contracting, contracts, purchasing department, DPW Finance.
All right, any questions from the board? Mr. Bateson?
It's before us, but the report is going to be tendered to the Board of Finance, right? They're running it?
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, I think that--
You guys would probably want to be involved in it.
What had happened is I'd reached out through Mr. Mayor to our independent auditor to ask for this type of review at the same time the Board of Finance was. It didn't make sense to have two independent reviews, so as part of that discussion, it seemed to make sense to have our auditor do one review. It has to come from this board to initiate the funding.
Yeah, I mean, basically, the way this would generally work, and the charge, the outline is very broad. The charge in the proposal that's before you gives the auditor wide scope, wide breadth of scope to look at just about everything. They would come in, they would test, ask questions, review transactions, and then they have questions for the Board of Finance members or for, from you guys. They would ask those questions if they came across anything, and then they would issue a preliminary draft report, which would be reviewed, and then--
Preliminary draft report, we'll go to who?
Well, probably both boards.
Everybody.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions?
I mean, I have a couple. One, I mean, if you go over the scope, you know, I feel like the ultimate auditor is going to be the criminal investigation we have going on right now.
Yes.
And the findings would come out of that. Am I wrong on that?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I understand what we're doing, but the investigation is centered around this administration. And I really feel like we should stress the phrase "independent" and have it done by outside, an outside board in the Board of Finance to oversee this. It was proposed at their meeting. I would love to get a copy of the draft report, but, you know, it's, they're the ones who oversee, you know, these type of financial controls. Is that correct, Bob?
Well, when they say "they oversee," yeah, the, the, yes. I mean, they're the Board of Finance, and they are responsible for approving the budget, approving the expenditures, thus their issues. I think there's 12 decimal line of the charter, gives them the authority to draft policies and procedures related to requisitions. I mean, it's, I'm not sure what your question is, Zach, I mean, it's a new independent audit, it's by the outside auditors, going to be paid for, and the result's going to be the same regardless of who they report to.
Right. So I guess I want to stress the word "independent." I want to make sure that they're not receiving any sort of instructions. They have full access to all documents, all files the town has, and I don't, I'd rather have them report directly. I mean, if there's any sort of, you know, bump in the road of them not being able to obtain the information they need to complete the audit, to me, it seems like that information should go, it should actually go to both boards. I'd actually like both boards to have that information, but to dictate, to dictate the audit, I think should be the Board of Finance, based upon what you just indicated with the charter and who oversees internal controls.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, the independent auditor, that's their job every year, in terms of going through, looking at, kind of reviewing our books, if you will, and issuing an opinion on those, and part of that is looking at the controls. So one of the reasons for working with them, they are an independent, they're an outside auditor, and this kind of is their job function. This just makes it a little more focused. And absolutely, you know, from a professional standpoint, their code of ethics won't let them get denied without access to anything they want, in that--
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, I don't understand that comment, actually, because there's, I mean, they're going to get stuff from my office and, out of my office, through my office, and I don't know why they would. I mean, there'd be no question that they'd have access to all records, which they do.
Well, I would just, I mean, Ed and I have been asking for documents for a while, we don't get, and some things aren't given to us.
You've never asked me for documents, never.
I specifically haven't, because I view your job as being overseen by the Board of Finance. And we do have checks and balances in place, or at least we're led to believe, but, you know, in this case, I believe what we're auditing is a systematic failure of what was in place, which, I mean, you were overseeing.
The arrest warrant talked about credit issues, if you will. Credit issues. Credit memos that, well, let me back up. Let me try to start from the beginning. In 2013, when DPW, when Julian got the contract, Mr. Barlet mentioned to, told Kalen, the controller, he was going to accept credit memos from the town in lieu of rent. Now, that's no loss to the town with respect to dollars and cents, but it is a violation of our policy, because we want to show everything broad, not net. Kalen instructed Mr. Barlet, that was against policy, and said, "No, you can't do that." There wouldn't have been any loss of revenue to the town, but it would have been a minor, because the minor, I say minor because it's $9,000 a year, and a material misstatement in our books and records. So we told, the finance department told him, "No." So anyway, he never sent or shared that information with Julian. So Julian submitted credit memos to Barlet. Barlet accepted those credit memos. Finance did not accept those credit memos. In fact, what Finance did was noted that no rent had been collected. So Finance went out and said, "Hey, there's no rents been collected. What's happened here?" Barlet had on his desk credit memos from Julian, that he accepted from Julian, that we discovered, that we wrote a report on, that we gave to the police department, and that's how it got in the record. So it wasn't a failing on the policies of the finance department, it wasn't a failing on the work of the finance department, it was a violation of a policy that the finance department had by one of the staff of the town. department had by one of the staff of the town, who no longer works here.
Mr. Bateson?
To Chris's point, I'm thinking, who typically runs the audit? The audit committee for the Board of Finance? Is that usually who supervises an audit?
Auditors run the audit.
Who supervises it on behalf of the town? The audit committee?
It's not supervised. It's always, they report to the audit committee. But the auditor's independent.
I think that's, could you, could you just take a moment? And because it seems we have a question of what independent means, could you just step everybody through that so we're clear?
Well, if, yeah, the auditor comes in, they have a charge, they have ethics, they have their own policies, procedures, industry ethics, policy ethics, CPA ethics, et cetera. They have rules to go by. If they are, they are charged by their own policies, procedures, to perform certain steps, to perform them independently, and report them to, to the town, in a corporation, it'd be to the board of directors, in a town, it's to the governing bodies.
And to the governing bodies, I mean, I feel like when you come across the credit memos, you go, come across the, you know, you know, payment in lieu of rent for the purchase of the fill, which is where, I mean, where we're at today, I mean, that's something which I feel like should have been indicated or identified to the Board of Finance, that this was occurring, as someone who is responsible for overseeing that. So, that's why, that's why I'm only a little hesitant on, on, you know, us having involvement in an independent audit.
Well, who's "us"? I guess I don't understand the, your...
So, if the Board of Finance is overseeing and instructing exactly what's to occur in this audit, and we have this, this thing here, to me, it seems like it should be reporting to the Board of Finance, not the Board, the Board of Selectmen should be, should be included in information obtained from the audit, but as far as directing and instructing, you know, I would say, the movement of the audit, it should be left, those decisions should be left to the Board of Finance.
Well, if I understand, all right, the directing and instructing is in the scope of work here.
I mean, if you want the audit, I don't see anything wrong with what you're saying. I mean, it's...
That's who I want running.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, well, I want to enforce that.
Yeah, I mean, it's just basically, what I think you're saying is, you, you want a committee of which would, of the Board of Finance to be the audit committee, like, for annual audit, we have an audit committee. You want a special audit committee by the Board of Finance, and then the Board of Finance already has set up a committee to oversee this, it's been assigned. The only thing I said is, you guys probably want to do the same thing, but you don't have to.
I don't think I want to be involved in that.
Yeah.
I think that's the Board of Finance's purview.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's not an issue.
All right. As long as we're clear on that.
I thought we were here just approving the money for the audit.
Yeah, approving the money for the audit.
Well, I wanted to be clear on that, so I'm happy to approve the money for the audit.
Yeah, I think, I read the general...
It just seems like we got sidetracked into, like, the Board of, somehow that we were gonna be involved in the audit, and no.
Well, it's not involved, but we had, if the Board of Finance hadn't done anything, we would be moving forward with this. The fact the Board of Finance is doing it doesn't make sense to do two.
Yeah, so we'll just do one by the Board of Finance.
But we also have a chance to look at the scope and see if we wanted to expand that at all, if we're comfortable with where the scope is.
You guys need to approve this for the funding.
Yeah.
The audit's gonna happen, the Board of Finance is gonna be involved, Board of Finance has a committee that the auditor, the auditor is gonna communicate with. All that's gonna happen. You guys can have it layers on that committee.
I have no objection to the scope as is.
You can have your own committee.
I too, I'll agree on the scope.
No suggestions on expansion or any other areas that you'd like looked into?
Not at this time.
The only thing you need to do then is, I read the, I don't have a copy of the agenda in front of me, but when I read the agenda, it doesn't have an amount in it. If I, I might have read it early agenda, I don't know.
Oh, the 15,000 is in the...
Yeah, but the Board of Finance approved up to 20,000 if necessary. So, you need to insert that language in the middle of that sentence that's in the...
I'll make that motion if you want.
Now, if you move to amend the item before us?
Yeah, I'd like to move to amend item number eight, to hear, consider, and approve up to $20,000 towards an independent audit review.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Sheila, do we move and second the original motion?
We did not.
Oh, so, probably need to move and second the original motion.
I'll make a motion.
On a second?
Second.
All right. And your amendment again, all in favor? Oh, no, go ahead. Your amendment next.
Okay. To hear, consider, and approve up to $20,000 for an independent. Did you get it?
I did.
I'll second that.
All right. So, the item as amended, are the amendments before us? Any further discussion on the amendment, and the amendment only?
No.
Any comments from the public on the amendment, and the amendment only? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. So, the item as amended is before us.
One final comment, response from Timniak to your, your comment about information. I want to go on record, no town body or commission has ever not received anything they've requested from my office.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The item as amended, any further discussion on the item as amended?
No.
All right. Any comments from the public on the item as amended? Seeing none, back before this board. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. That item up. Up next, fill pile discussion. I think that was requested. To be honest, who would like to kick that off?
I mean, I will. I mean, there's, is Mr. Hibson here?
Yes, he is.
Can you come up and join us?
Is Chris here? Lady? I don't believe so. I think he got a letter from the state's attorney that I believe was forwarded to both of you.
Yep.
And the state's attorney requested he not show.
So, I'll start off by saying that, you know, we had a meeting in early August, lots of issues were discussed. We found what we believed to be lots of inconsistencies in what was stated in August. I'm seeing lots of inconsistencies of what I know to be the truth and to what has occurred in the last couple of years in regards to the fill pile. I'm not happy with these inconsistencies being spread around town, and I'd like to sort of create a timeline to have the record reflect what we believe to be some areas of concern. And so, we asked, we did ask Chief Liddy to come, and we received a letter from the state's attorney's office, you know, advising him not to. We asked Stan Lesser, our town attorney, to come, who is still away at a wedding, and we asked HR Director Emmett Hibson to come. So, at the last meeting we had in August, we discussed the actions of the former, oh, I guess he's still the Public Works Director, Joe Michelangelo. So, we discussed him, we talked about the pavers issue at length. I found it abhorrible that the Public Works Director would take pavers from the fill pile and have him redo his driveway, his walkway, and his sidewalk. One of my concerns, and I relayed this to the town attorney, Ed and I both sent an email, asking, "Why is that not a violation of the town charter, employee code of conduct?" So, I figure, you know, you must have looked into that, and I'm curious as to your opinion on why that doesn't violate the employee code of conduct outlined in the town charter.
So, let me comment on a couple of things. First, I did see an email, so I, I did take a view of the questions that were asked in an email, and I did take a look at the charter. I am not the town attorney, so whatever I opine on that wouldn't necessarily be relevant to the decision from the town attorney or an opinion from the town attorney, number one. Number two, to the extent that I'm gonna, that I would answer those questions, I would need to put Joe Michelangelo notice that we were gonna discuss that and give him an opportunity to be here, have it an executive or be, mandatory be an executive session, unless he requested it to be in public session. So, if we're gonna talk about a specific employee and an employee's actions, FOI requires that it be an executive session and/or give him an opportunity or her an opportunity to put it into public session. So, I would be uncomfortable talking in specifics about any one employee without you asking me to have that employee here and giving that employee an opportunity to be here for that.
So, one of the most common emails or comments I've read or text messages I've gotten is, is why he's still employed. And, I mean, I would direct that question squarely to you, Mike. Can you picture Joe Michelangelo ever working for the town of Fairfield again?
Simply put, it'd be inappropriate to answer that at this time since we're still conducting an internal review of Mr. Michelangelo and, and the events that have taken place.
Yeah, I, I... I want to jump in on the internal review. I, I think I heard about this at a public forum or somewhere. The internal review, I think, needs to be overseen by the Board of Selectmen, not the first selectman. So, I think if there's a process or something that is already started or the wheels are in motion about this review, I think it needs to emanate from this board.
I think I'm gonna ask Mr. Hibson's guidance on that, because it's established in our charter who does that review.
So, it is. There is several provisions in the charter that are relevant to the hiring of the Department of Public Works Director. And the first is 9.7, which states that he is appointed by the first selectman. Then there are several provisions in section one and in section eight, I believe, that get into the first selectman's appointment and the...
So, we're talking about a review of a specific person?
So, under the charter...
I have the impression that this was a review of everything that happened. That's the way I had heard it in public. You're talking about a specific review of, of the director of Public Works.
That's what...
That was Mr. Timniak's question.
That's how I understood the question, and to the extent that that's the question...
I was talking about the review, the independent...
The internal review we just discussed in the last item, all right, so we're doing, we've been reviewing our internal procedures anyway. We talked about bringing an internal auditor...
Okay, that's the one I'm talking about.
Outside independent review of that.
Okay.
My office has not been charged with that. The police department obviously did their investigation, but they've been given, I'm not involved in the police investigation, nor am I allowed to have conversations with Chief Liddy regarding that any longer. Any longer.
Say that again?
Any longer.
So, elaborate on that?
I will tell you that the chief was keeping me informed of the fact that there was an investigation ongoing up until probably December of 2018.
What was your level of knowledge on that?
It did not pertain to any current employees.
Say that again?
My level of knowledge at the time is that, as it stands now, it does not pertain to any current employees. So, to the extent that you're asking about a current employee, I had no knowledge to the extent that you're asking about...
Would you consider Joe Michelangelo a current employee?
I would.
Okay. So, I, I mean, we're moving, it's hard, because we're moving awfully fast here, and, I mean, there's things I want to go back to, which were said at our last meeting, but I also want to follow up on that.
Just for record, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know, and I didn't watch it, so I don't know exactly what was said. I know, I'm sorry I didn't watch it, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, this is the biggest issue in town, right?
Yeah, but I didn't watch your, didn't watch your meeting.
So, where do we stand on finding an interim Public Works Director?
So, we have a couple of names. I've reached out to a couple of individuals and just waiting to follow up on, on that process.
Okay. So, at the last meeting, the first selectman said that we were doing a search for that, okay? To me, I would go ahead and I would post and I would advertise, and I have not seen anything in over a month now of our Public Works Director advertised on the HR website. And I'm wondering how you're doing your job of finding a replacement without advertising to everybody in the state of Connecticut that this position we are looking for. Because, I mean, you didn't watch the meeting minutes, you didn't watch the minutes. I highly doubt many people who are interested in becoming the Public Works Director of the town watched the, the meeting as well. But it was very clearly stated that we were gonna go forward with this process of searching to find a Public Works candidate. It's been a month, and it's not posted online. What, what is that? So, I'm very curious on who you're calling to become the Public Works Director of town? Who, who, how is, how are we...
Have you guys have been forwarded to me?
Yeah, if I could, since the opening at the moment is not permanent, comment was looking for an interim Public Works Director. We did have a couple of suggestions in terms of some, a couple of Public Works Directors that had recently retired. I forwarded those to Mr. Hibson for him to follow up on as part of that process.
And our Public Works Director requires, so we've appointed, obviously, Brian Carey in the interim role as a superintendent. He does not have a professional engineering degree, which is a requirement of our job. So, we need, if we're gonna appoint someone in the interim, there's an opinion that they must need the minimum requirements of the position, which does require an individual to have a professional engineering degree. We do currently have someone on staff, we have a couple people on staff, who do hold PE licenses, so it's not as if the town is without a PE, so...
So, if someone's mildly interested and they go to the HR website and they look to see if anything's posted or even looking, I mean, do they know about this special channel that they have to email you directly or know a friend of a friend to get the job? I doubt it.
I doubt it.
I doubt it. So, that's, that's one of my, my big concerns, because as we discussed at the last meeting, the Public Works Department is responsible for an awful lot, a major percentage of our budget. I think it's the largest employee union, right? What's the largest employee?
No, it's not the largest employee. The largest employee bargaining unit is the police department, followed by FIRE. Public Works is, not sure, it might actually be fourth.
Okay. So, it's large. I apologize for identifying as the largest.
Chris?
Yes.
Can I jump in here?
Mr. Bateson, go right ahead.
I'm reading the letter from the chief state's attorney's office, and I don't see where this directs Chief Liddy not to appear. Did somebody interpret this document and give him advice?
I haven't seen the letter.
Okay.
No, in this case, Chief Liddy told me he got the letter and was instructed by the state's attorney not to appear, so...
And a follow-up phone call, because I'm not seeing that in here.
I didn't read it with that, I just forwarded it on to both of you as soon as I got it.
Okay, because in the letter, it says, "It has come to this office's attention that you and, and/or members of the police department are being questioned or pressured to undergo inquiry regarding the pending criminal prosecution referenced above." I wouldn't say we're asking about that. I'd say I'm more interested in, you know, who knew what when?
Well, perhaps if you email those questions to Chief Liddy, he could respond to them, so it wouldn't have to be here at the board of meetings, so you can still get your answer.
Yeah, but it's better to do it in a public forum.
Okay. So, I, I want to continue. You showed extensive knowledge of the charter and the hiring practices for the Public Works Director, but you failed to show any knowledge in the employee conduct side of things. Kicking our request back, which you admitted you reviewed on a legal opinion, of which we do pay you for, to the town attorney, saying you can't make a judgment call on that. Again, I felt like, here we are, just working extra, extra hard to gain some sort of understanding of the internal decisions which were made.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question, saying I kicked something back to you?
You kicked it back to the town attorney. You told me five minutes ago that you...
I said that under the charter, the town attorney has the authority to interpret the charter. I do not have that authority, regardless of whether I'm hired to do legal work for the town. I still don't, I still can't speak under the charter for the interpretations. The charter's pretty clear that boards and commissions... The charter is pretty clear that boards and commissions could ask the town attorney for an opinion. I can tell you that I am not the town attorney under the charter, and I would not be in a position to answer a question that a board or commission is asking me and answer it with authority.
Okay, so I'm asking you as the HR Director. How do you, how do you go ahead and judge the employee conduct? Does every board have to go ask for a legal opinion as the HR Director? I mean, you're responsible for hiring and firing and keeping up with employee conduct. You're the HR Director.
I am.
So was I supposed to send the HR Director? I mean, that's why you're here today because I'm asking these specific questions and you're relying on the town attorney opinion. And again, here I am working extra hard for a basic answer I should be getting from the HR Director.
Well, I think that perhaps, if I understand your question correctly, it had to do with standards of conduct. And perhaps the board to go to or commission to go to is the Ethics Commission for that. And that would be the simplest way to go, and that could have been done at any point in the last month or so that you wanted, was to raise that issue with the Ethics Commission.
I thought-
Selectmen Timniak, I mean-
Do you sense my frustration?
I understand your frustration, but as I read the email, I saw questions of interpretation of the Ethics Section. Section 11 is what the, is what the email had asked, right? Now, I may have opinions on that, but to give you an opinion, to give you a statement as to whether I believe there is a violation of that-
But that's also why we have an Ethics Commission, is you just raise the question to them. That's their charge, that's their charter, that's what they should be doing, and anybody can raise that, anybody can bring that to them.
I think the Human Resources Director would have more say over specific conduct of the employee. That's just me. Ethics Commission, I think, you know, I'm talking about a town employee and not somebody that serves on a board or commission.
Right, I thought the question was about standards of conduct and ethics. If the question is violated an employee policy, certainly the Human Resources Director would be in charge.
Yes, and that's, that's what I identified, that he violated an employee policy. That's what was identified in that.
Okay, which policy are you referring to, so?
He took a good or value or service from the facility.
From where?
From the Public Works yard. From the Julian pile, he took the pavers. He lined-
As I understand it-
He used his position to receive a benefit no other employee was able to receive because he was at the top of the, he was in charge.
How many pavers did he take from the Julian pile?
I think it's irrelevant.
Actually, I think it's two, and Julian owned those, and Julian gave him permission to do that.
Yeah, and I would honestly be careful about FOI purposes. I mean, part of my hesitation is in answering this question is, I mean, to the question of whether a policy was violated. I do have an opinion on that, but I'd be very careful as it relates to Mr. Michelangelo. I think I stated before that I, that I am not capable of, unless we put Mr. Michelangelo on notice and have him here and have him given the opportunity to be in a, well, us have this conversation in a private executive session, give him the opportunity for public session. I'm not, I'm not comfortable talking specifically about Joe Michelangelo-
And listen, I'm not sharing any other information which was in the arrest warrant affidavit. That's where I'm getting my information from.
Can I go back to, I want to go back to the police. Is that okay?
If you'd like.
Yeah. Emmett, when, in our January meeting, when we discovered that the Police Department shared a draft report with you, in reading that, I, I got to assume that that draft report was the source of the affidavits, the arrest warrants. Is that, the police investigation is what culminates in the arrest warrant affidavits?
So let me give you a, let me start from the scratch, start from the beginning on this, and hopefully that'll answer your question. The Police Department was-
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
There was a specific question.
Yep. Mr. Timniak, I'll instruct the gentleman, please.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Bateson has the floor, and Mr. Hipson is trying to answer his question.
So sometime when Chief McNamara was still here, he came into my office and he instructed, or he advised me that the police were conducting a criminal investigation. He advised me that he wasn't sure that there was anything criminal in nature, but that he assumed that whatever they were finding may lead to some employment-related matters. Mr. Chief McNamara retires, Chief Liddy comes into, comes into office, and actually, I think in the interim, sometime, I believe in December of 2018, he gave me a draft, it wasn't a document, it was actually a draft warrant, quite frankly, and asked me to review the warrant from an employment-related matter. At the time, it only related to one of our, one of our former employees. And so I reviewed the document, I instructed him, or instructed him, I said, if I was, you know, for an employment perspective, if I was going to handle a discipline matter down the road, there's a couple of things that I would like your detective to follow up on because otherwise, at some point, I will have to follow up. The meeting was facilitated between myself and the detective involved in the investigation. I asked him to do a couple of things. He indicated he would, and then after that, I don't believe I had any further involvement, and I believe I was, the department was instructed not to communicate further with me. Prior to the release of this, we were given a heads up that something would be released. And we called the State's Attorney. They were advised not to, as I said, have communication with us. We called the State's Attorney, advised them that, you know, we did have employment-related matters, we would like a heads up on those matters. And the State's Attorney had a meeting with the town attorney and the Chief of Police and excluded me from that meeting and also told us we would not be getting that. In fact, once the warrants were issued, she advised the chief that he couldn't provide us with copies of those, so we had to go to court ourselves and pick up a copy. So I have not had any communications with the Police Department or have been involved in any of the investigation since December of 2018. At that time, it was only one employee and it did not pertain to anything regarding public health.
Say that again?
At that time, it was only with one employee or one previous employee, and it did not pertain to anything with regard to public health.
You mean, public safety?
Public safety. It was much more narrow in scope when I was reviewing it.
What I, what I find troubling about this, about this timeline is that when, when I read the arrest warrant affidavits, if I put together the piece that you had seen these or the source of these in December, there's a level of bad stuff in there that I would have expected to immediately send off alarms in Town Hall, that we need to get the Department of Health involved, there's stuff going on, there's allegations that there's dumping or anything like that, there's unaccounted waste.
Nope, was not a part of the December warrant.
So they withheld that from you, is what you're saying? They took out everything in the report?
No, I don't believe at that point. So my understanding from the, and the chief's not here, so he can't answer this. My understanding was, at that time, he was working with the Bridgeport State's Attorney's Office, the department was. The matter at some point got kicked up to Rocky Hill into an environmental, and they took over the scope of the investigation, and the investigation changed tax. That's my understanding, is that, that that, the scope of the investigation completely changed after Bridgeport kicked it up to Rocky Hill.
Say that again?
So Bridge, so the Police Department-
When you looked at it, Bridgeport was still handling it?
That's my understanding, yes.
You're saying when it got kicked up to Rocky Hill?
The tenor of the investigation, that's my understanding. Again, I was out of it at that point, but my understanding was the tenor of the investigation changed significantly once Rocky Hill got involved.
So, I mean, I, I don't know how to dispute that. I can only look at, at what's in the paragraph one of the arrest warrant and assume that you read the, the opening of it, where it says there's an ongoing pattern of criminal activity for the first surface with a flawed bid process that was awarded a town bid to contractor Julian Development. This investigation shows evidence that this, this is an intentional lack of oversight and the pattern of criminal activity was ongoing from the initial bid process to the date Julian Development was removed from the site. At the, at the beginning of it, it says, "There's evidence of municipal corruption that included larceny by defrauding of public community, forgery and conspiracy to illegally dump contaminated materials, including hazardous materials and PCBs on town property."
That was not in the draft that I saw.
But all that-
I didn't even see the chart, quite frankly, at that point, it did not have the charge. They weren't sure what the charges were going to be, but there was not, what you just read there, from what I remember, was not-
So you're saying that got, that got added later?
Definitely the, the charges did, and definitely the dumping and anything to do with that, correct. I don't remember the exact paragraphs, and quite frankly, once the, once it changed, I was advised that my copy was no longer relevant and that I should destroy it.
So, I mean, and then it goes to the criminal side, and I guess-
Don't forget the other employee that you mentioned, it wasn't even, there was nothing to do with the other employee you mentioned.
I mean, I guess those are, those are specific questions for, for Chief Liddy. I find it, I find it hard to believe that the Chief of Police left out what the one individually employee was, was part of a multi-year investigation, which had all those details in it, and he left those details out for you to act on.
I don't believe that he was a target of the investigation at that time.
I'm talking about the employee who's no longer working for us. I mean, what, what, what did you read? Like what, like what led you to have such a passive decision on, on his employment or raising, raising, like what did they submit, is what I'm wondering? What did you guys discuss in December? I mean, you're very clear, it was about one employee. So that one employee has all of this listed here in, in the opening. So I just, I'm stunned that you think the opening changed or the scope changed, which included all that.
Mr. Bateson?
Where do we stand with the testing?
The initial testing at the 21 locations is complete for the sites that were identified that need remediation. I believe there's additional testing that's going to be needed done to profile exactly where the extent of the remediation needed at those specific locations.
And the stuff that we're posting online that is coming out of your office, the test results, are those summaries of test results or is that the actual hard data that Ty and Bond is getting?
It's two levels. One, we get summaries from Ty and Bond-
Yeah.
-that they give us, we post those. Then there's, in fact, more detailed test results that come back a few days later and we post those when we get them.
Okay, are all those posted to date, what we have?
Everything we have has been posted. I'm not clear if, and so all the summaries have been posted, certainly. I'm not clear if all the detailed tests behind that have been posted.
Yeah, can we just get the details posted when we get them?
As, that's our policy, as soon as we get them, we post them.
And just a general question, I noticed in, in picking up this issue, in the past several years, I've had three LEPs on this site. I've had Cindy, who I don't know who she worked for, I've had Osprey, and now I have Ty and Bond. Is there a reasoning that we've switched LEPs on this site? So, in the three instances that we've needed, LEPs?
Osprey has been working for the town, I want to say for over 10 years, has been involved for an extensive period of time. Cindy Knight, and forgive me, I also forget the name of her company, was brought in specifically to test the pile from September 16th on as part of the wind down in the Julian event. And Ty and Bond was brought in most recently because we needed an, an emergent start. They're on the state bid list, and they're somebody that Brian Carey, our interim DPW Director, was familiar with.
Also too, I, this, when it comes down to the berm, the construction of the berm, Osprey has this, this application that they sent. Everyone keeps asking me about this, this draft report from Osprey. I don't understand why it's so difficult to get that.
I don't think it is. I think you're referring to the January 10th.
Yeah. I still don't have it. And can we get, can we get that?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, all right. I'd like that as soon as possible.
Can I just chime in on that? So, so we're looking at that, we do have the January 10th. It's a draft, it's a draft letter to, I want to say it's DEP, but it might be to Joe. It's a response to the DEP application. The only thing we're, we're sure and we're trying to figure out is if, because it clearly isn't draft, there's questions on that, is if there is a formal letter. We understand there was a January 31st letter. We were just trying to confirm whether, and I know Pat was working on that, I'm sorry, our FOI, our risk manager was working on that today to try and figure out whether, in fact, there was a final version of the letter, in which case the, under FOI, the draft wouldn't be released, the final version would be released. Once we have that, we'll, we plan on releasing the document, whichever document is the, the final version, but we just-
Selectmen, I'd like to see both. Draft and final. So that's my request. Something hap-
That's fair.
Okay, something happened last night at, I was at a sewer commission last week, and I was at a Board of Finance meeting last night, and we have some issues down at the treatment plant, and I think we're building a, part of the hardening project, we're going to be building a berm. And we lost part of the project because we can't use the fill from the Julian pile. And that struck me as odd because that should be certified to, I'd say, commercial standards, not residential. And Brian, Brian Carey had said it would be cost prohibitive because he would have to test so many cubic yards that went into the construction of that berm. And that kind of caught me as strange because I'm like, if it's cost prohibitive to put that small amount into that project, how did we afford to test that material that we put into the berm surrounding the 40,000 cubic yards that we did? So I want to make sure that we tested, I heard a standard that we were supposed to hold ourselves to last night, and I want to make sure that that standard we did for the berm. So whoever would address that, I would, I would like to know.
I think, I think we've got a document from Osprey that will document that, but certainly if we need to bring Brian Carey before this board, we can certainly do that to have, give you a chance to have any follow-up questions you need.
Okay. That'll work for me on the berm. And what do we, Board of Education is doing their own testing?
I believe they're using Ty and Bond, but they're, they're identifying what they want tested, correct.
Okay, now how, on, in the online forums, I'm detecting a level of concern that what is driving where we're testing? Is there enough testing going on? Should there be more? Should we test everything? Who's determining that? Is it Sands Cleary sitting down with Ty and Bond? Are we going to DPW where we're interviewing? I mean, where does this end?
At the moment, I've identified or asked Sands Cleary, Department of Health, since either health-related issues, to take responsibility for identifying the sites. He's working with Ty and Bond to identify which sites we should test.
Where does that come from? Do you go down to DPW and ask the guys, "Where did you go?"
No, it's, it's a combination of looking at the invoices that are in finance and then matching those up with work tickets so we know which invoice responded to where, the location and the actual type of fill that was used, so that when those are matched up, Ty and Bond identifies where to test.
Okay. That, that concerns me because who's preparing the invoices? I don't consider that a reliable source. I would, I'm assuming those invoices are coming from Julian, and there's a lot stated in that affidavit, the arrest warrant affidavit, about their business procedures. So I would say, I would say that's not a great source. I think you should need, you just don't rely on those invoices. I think there should be more of listening to the public, talking to DPW, or just say, "We're going to map out everything. Bang, 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 bang. Here's all the things, here's all towns, just go random sample." I just think we might be at that level. I would not, if I was in charge, I would not rely- I would not-- if I was in charge, I would not rely on those invoices at this time.
Did we purchase fill from anywhere else, other than Julian, during that timeframe?
Well, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, do you know to the-- could we look into that, get the answer?
We certainly can get the answer to that.
I want to go back to Mr. Hibson, because I wasn't done. Because I am still, I'm probably now, you know, beating it pretty hard, but in the arrest warrant affidavit, the conclusion, which you're saying wasn't part of what you read-
You have a completely different arrest warrant than I had. As I told you, the arrest warrant that I had has been, and the chief told me, what you had and what's out, and what you're going to see are entirely different documents, not even in the same shadow sphere.
So, but I'm wondering who, I mean, I want to know who made those changes, then, because if we're focused around the one employee you mentioned, the closing paragraph of the arrest warrant says, "The misuse of potentially contaminated materials for Fairfield Town Projects. As a result of the above detailed criminal activity, the town of Fairfield has been left with a potentially co-contaminated and polluted material to be removed and/or managed at the expense of the Fairfield taxpayer, and with the potential detrimental impact to the town residents and their environment."
But that wasn't in-- I'm trying to tell you, in December of 2018, the warrant had nothing along those lines. It was nothing related to any contaminants. It was nothing related to dumping. It was nothing related to hazardous waste. There was nothing in the warrant that had anything to do with that. What it had to do with was simply the relationship between the town, well, an individual, and Julian. It took on a different life after the last time I saw it, and quite frankly, the relationship at that point wasn't ripe for an employment intervention. There were still things they were trying to figure out, there were still inconsistencies at the time, so that's why it took another six months before there was any arrests. And it wasn't, it was nowhere near the document that it was, and at that point, it got kicked up to, or at some point, I don't know when it got kicked up to Rocky Hill, but at the point that I was involved, it was still in Bridgeport, and there was nothing to do with environmental.
And you contacted Rocky Hill to find out what was going on? Is that what you said earlier?
I reached out, myself and Stanton, reached out to the state's attorney up there, I forget her name, and she was, one, taken aback that we called her, and, two, in no uncertain terms, indicated that we weren't to have any input with it. And then, on top of that, the next day, a letter went to the chief, telling him not to talk to me, to the point where the chief would not even email me after the warrant had been served. So, I was down in, so I was on vacation when the warrant was served. I asked him to email me the document. He's like, "Emmett, I can't." So, I think, if I remember correctly, I think Stanton went to court, got the warrants, and emailed them to me down in North Carolina.
Yeah, no, I had to go to court to get documents, documents as well. So, to that point, at what point do you thi-- I mean, it's obviously directed at the chief, but at what point does all of those statements I read fall on the chief notifying someone to say, "Hey, listen, the town we're protected, I mean, we took an oath to protect and serve, has all of this hazardous waste all over it. My investigative team did all this work, and I'm not informing anybody." Or maybe-
Yeah, I think that what we've certainly heard from both DEEP and the Department of Health is there wasn't, nothing in the pile rose to the level of hazardous waste. So, I'm not sure that that level, that definition, was understood in that document.
Did the chief offer to share any of this information with you?
No.
You've said in public meetings that you didn't know anything about this, and we've seen online, and we saw in News 12, that you were sent emails four years ago about the Gould Manor stuff. And I'm curious how you continue to say you knew nothing about it, when at this point, you did know about it, you replied to those emails.
When you say, "Didn't know anything about it," could you please define what?
I would say the hazardous waste around town, because at the public meetings, you're leading the impression that this is a surprise, like, you know. What I'm seeing here, and what Ed and I are talking about, is many department heads, you know, if I count them, five or six, all had small little pieces, and nobody really connected the dots. And I'm wondering, I mean, well, I know, exactly, like, the person to connect the dots, I believe, should have been you. There's small pieces, whether it's the finance department with the credit memos for fill we purchased, or the investigative process, or everybody who's been interviewed, you know, has pieces, or what Emmett knew from his meetings, you know, what the guys at Public Works have been saying, the employees there. This didn't just jump up on us. I mean, we talked about it in an executive session, because we were going through it with the civil stuff. We talked about the criminal, and that's why we had that conversation with you. I mean, it's, I'm disappointed that that's going on. And then, you know, the email you sent last week, the day after the Board of Finance meeting discovered that there was no contract, there was an RFP. We had an RFP with Julian.
Yes.
Yeah, we had an RFP.
And that's, that we've known, I want to say, from day one.
From day one, from day one. So, in the email you sent out to all the residents, you described in the first paragraph, the contract we had with them.
Yeah, we were using the RFP as a contract.
Yeah. And when you look at the town charter, that gets me into a whole bunch of other questions. This is a multi-year contract. They're essentially leasing property. We have to approve the leased properties for the child's garden, for renting sidewalk space. How come this doesn't go to the town boards? That's a question I've been asked multiple times. How did this contract not go to town boards to approve? And, yeah, I think it's something you should have seen, signing the RFP, that it should have been a more firm contract, and yet, we're in a criminal lawsuit, a civil lawsuit against them, and we're holding an RFP up. That's frustrating, because I think that's misleading the public into believing that there was a contract, and I know we're now splicing language of what's an RFP and what's a contract, but a contract is very different than an RFP. Do we have any other RFPs right now in town we're using instead of firm contracts for multi-year deals?
I would have to check with Purchasing on that, the, to be 100% sure, but not to my knowledge. The only one that comes to mind that I'd have to check would be the Harvest New England operation.
What about contracts like, or RFPs, potentially with Tarantino, who does all of our fields?
RFPs can certainly be multi-year bids, in doing that happens on a fairly regular basis.
So, perhaps we should discuss a policy change to make sure that we have it fully identified of what we want the town boards to approve moving forward, so that we don't get in a situation where we have a multi-year RFP, which the town bodies haven't had an opportunity to review or examine. If that's been the past practice, as identified at the Board of Finance meeting about a week ago, I think that's something we should look for, look towards. Ed, do you have a problem with that?
No. Yeah, that's certainly been something that's been done, both on the town side, as well as the Board of Ed's side.
I want to just follow up. Chris brought up a good point. Mike, there were pieces of this out there. And now, you know, with hindsight, I look back, and, you know, the police department had a piece, Public Works, Emmett read some documents. There was just pieces of finance, credit memos, an internal audit. It should have been, somebody, you should have connected the dots. That's my assessment of looking back on this a month later.
Yeah.
After reading all this and saying, "This was on your desk, this was on your desk." I mean, personally, I would have flipped out when I found out what was going on at Gould Manor.
Yeah.
And said, "Okay, there's, you know, this stuff never should have been released from the yard. What happened?"
Mr. Bateson, to be clear, these things didn't hit my desk. The police investigation did not hit my desk.
But it was at your--
It was not.
But your direct reports knew.
Yeah, but the criminal investigation doesn't get disclosed to anybody.
You can't-
All right? The fact that the police know any more than, just, they're not disclosing that, there's just no way to know.
I know, but it's on the say.
Finance did not highlight to me the use of credit memos. I found out about that when Mr. Mayor came and said, "Hey, this is what has gone on. We have fixed it, reconciled it, and the town is not out any money." But he let me know that had taken place in the past.
I just feel all the pieces were there, they should have been connected.
Ed, the pieces were not there.
I see them here.
You see them there, 2020 hindsight, they were not there at that time.
That's hindsight, looking there. This was stuff, you mean, you're in charge of these people.
And the police have an obligation not to talk about the criminal investigation. They didn't, there is no way to know that.
Can we go, I want to talk about this, what we'll call an internal review. I heard this mentioned at, I don't know whether it was a Board of Finance meeting or a public forum. What is this internal review you're performing?
There actually, let's talk about the one at the Board of Finance meeting, was definitely concerned with our process. It started, frankly, in part, back in 2016, as soon as some of the issues came up with the bid and Julian, to sit down with Purchasing and identify each of the hiccups that we had in the Julian process, and how do we make sure that doesn't happen again, including fully checking and validating any bonds that come in.
Okay, that's one. I was led to believe that you're addressing, that you're reviewing what happened with this whole thing. Am I--
No, that's absolutely correct. The independent audit was part of that, that's why I reached out to our independent auditor.
Okay, who's on this internal review that you're doing?
All right.
I heard some department heads were on it.
All right. That in part is certainly Mr. Hibson, Mr. Mayor, myself, Mr. Carey, as a start, and we'll bring in anybody else we need.
And you guys, is there some sort of goal? Do you have, what are you doing?
Right now, we're trying to understand what took place, and certainly, the independent audit will be a big help in doing some of that. And then go back and look at how do we improve any procedures to make sure that this type of thing does not happen again.
Okay, I think some-
Just as much as I already did with the bid process with Purchasing back in 2016, to make sure a Julian scenario never happened again.
Okay, if we're going to attempt something like this and use town resources to arrive at a conclusion or assess what possibly went wrong here, I think that that's some, I don't think that should be controlled by the first selectman. I think that's something that should be done by the Board of Selectmen. So, I think we need to be bought. If this is an exercise you're going to continue and dedicate town resources towards, and arrive at a specific, or have a specific goal or charge, I really think that needs to be risen to this level.
Yep, happy to do that.
I know we have something scheduled for, Parks and Rec has a meeting tonight. I don't know, what's the purpose of that meeting, do you know? It's a public forum?
I do not know the meeting tonight.
Okay. They're going to be discussing the fill pile. Is the chairman still here, or did he leave? He left? Okay. So, where do we go from here?
Hold on, I got two more things. One, going back to the email which was sent out, you talk about transparency and how we're being transparent, like it's some sort of new, like, new toy we're rolling around, and we're advertising. I think if we were transparent from the beginning, we wouldn't be as bad off as we are right now. If we were transparent when we received the letters from Osprey and we notified the proper town boards, we could have let them know.
What letters from Osprey?
It's in the arrest warrant affidavit. They were sent to the town about the fill pile. When we were building the berm, they identified that we were building the berm with potentially contaminated material.
Actually, no, it, Osprey didn't say that.
Okay.
All right, that part of the warrant is inaccurate.
All right, should I read you what Osprey said?
Sure.
In the arrest warrant affidavit in December 2016, we sort of touched on it earlier, too. The town DPW hired Robert Grabach of Osprey Environmental Engineering to perform sampling of materials at the site. According to the records, Osprey Environmental, the purpose of Robert Grabach's visit to the site on December 14th was to assess potential for pollution from contaminated material identified on the site, and assesses the degradation of the stormwater runoff. In a draft memorandum from Robert Grabach to Jill Michelangelo and Scott Bartlett dated December 22nd, 2016, Grabach reported a summary of sampling results and referenced that the exposed wastes had the potential to be, I can't pronounce that one, into the surrounding water bodies. The draft memo referred to samples containing PCBs, ETPHs, and PNA's above the DEC, and two of the samples containing phthalates in an elevated concentrations. Elevated concentrations of arsenic were also mentioned. Robert Grabach concludes this memo by advising, "Most of the materials may have possibly been removed as Connecticut regulated waste and not as EP hazardous waste. This will significantly reduce the cost of the disposal material. Should have been screened prior to transport to determine suitable disposal materials should not be used for fill for residential areas." That was what was identified there. And you're going to say that was sent to Bartlett and Michelangelo, and I'm going to say they had a duty not to hide it, to be transparent, which is one of the reasons why we are going to go into executive session.
Well, if we could, from the stop. One, that's an excerpt, and I want to point out that the police officer in question never talked to Rob Garrick at Osprey. Never once talked to the Osprey thing. Second, that's an excerpt. That is not the full statement that he made, and he was very upset that it was included in that, and his term for that is that it's misleading and inaccurate. We've got a letter from him I will send to you, and we've got it posted on the website, but I'll send you a copy so you have that.
Sure.
But importantly, all the tests that was done, as part of the berm and part of the installation, was done by Osprey. He confirmed that it met the appropriate standards and was posted online in the PW Yard website. All right? So, it was transparent, and it was posted, and it was fully available, because we were working with the neighbors at that point, and they were very concerned about what was taking place.
All right. I mean, you clearly believe you've been transparent in this process.
And I can prove it, yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Bateson? Where do we go from here? I just, how do I get the townspeople happy? That, I mean, I'm looking at this just from, you know, a 50,000-foot level. I mean, there was a problem down there, this stuff got out of the yard, I don't know where it went. What do I do? I mean, I--
From the top?
Maybe it's rhetorical, but I just, I'm posing this to you as, somebody's got to do something. I just, I'm worried that there's, I'm never going to be able to get anybody happy. Yeah, some of these things, some of these fields have opened, and people are saying they're doubting it. And I think that's healthy to doubt it, because it, how do we know? I mean, this place was, you read their arrest warrant affidavit, and it's, it was like the Wild West down there. Stuff coming in, going out, burying stuff. I'm like, I don't, it, if this got out, where do I look? And that's, I just, we need a plan. We need somebody to come in and to say, "This is it. We have to find this stuff." And I'm not going to rely on the fact that, I mean, I see your press releases coming out of Town Hall, "The stuff's safe." It never should have been there in the first place. Get rid of it. That's my attitude.
Okay. And we are going to get rid of it, but it's important to understand that the Department of Health and DEEP, who we're working very closely with, along with Ty and Bond, are making that health judgment. All right? And that's one of the important things to get out to our residents, in fact, that it is safe. All right? In fact, that where it exceeds residential limits, we'll go back and remediate that. And we are going through, with the help of Ty and Bond, to look at all the invoices we have, all the work tickets. we have, all the work tickets. We will also then take a look at, and we already have, any other places that either residents or employees have pointed out to us that we should also take a look at. We're going to track down every one of these.
How are we doing with that hotline? I saw something.
Yeah, the hotline is set up. We have to announce it, and, but we have it, it's contracted, it's set up and working. We want to work with Mr. Hipson's office to determine that there'll be somebody to answer that from Human Resources.
I thought it was going to be an outside company.
Well, it's tracked by an outside company, so it's anonymous coming in. All right? But somebody has to answer that.
I would, can we outsource that, please?
Well, they answer, they still have to give it to somebody inside if anything's going to happen. Sooner or later, somebody inside has to answer that. Mr. Hipson, could you step us through the process?
Yeah, so it was determined to, that we wanted to put a hotline in place, and we did want to outsource it. So we did. We outsourced it to a private company that handles complaints. They can handle it in either a phone format or an email format. You can call them anonymously. They will get the complaint. They will forward the complaint to, depending on the type of complaint, to a town resource to take action. And the town has X number of days to respond to that. We worked with, quite frankly, this is, this is the standard, this is what's done at towns. That's how employee hotlines work. We will be rolling it out. It was put in place, I want to say, we finalized the contract on Friday. We got the emails working, so I got to put together a release to send it out to employees and to the public what the numbers are. There's different types of activity. They can report to those numbers. Again, they will be done anonymously to the service, and then, depending on what type it is, will be forwarded to someone in town.
Do we have that report sent to multiple individuals within the town, not just one person? Whatever comes in on the hotline?
Yeah.
I don't want one person, let's have three. You know something? Multiple eyes.
Easy enough. Did you have any other questions on the hotline and how it works?
No.
Mr. Timmy?
I'd like to have public comment regarding this issue.
Okay. All right. If there's anybody who'd like public comment, I would remind you that it's comment, not question answered. I'd ask you to limit your comments to two minutes, if you would, please. Please come up to the podium, and if you would, just state your name and address, please.
Arthur Hirsch, 101 Bluff Road. Mike, we're all in trouble in this.
I would ask you to keep your comments to the topic at hand and not address any personal comments, Mr. Hirsch.
Why can't we get an independent board to look into the whole situation? Is there a way we could do that for the community?
It's public comment, Mr. Hirsch.
Okay.
But I believe the Board of Selectmen heard you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make public comment?
So.
If you could just, your name and address, please.
Dana Carey, 7 Green Acres Lane. So Dana Huff from Ty and Bond was on a committee with Jason Julian. This, there's no transparency in any of your words. I sent you 11 emails, and you knew nothing about it till last Tuesday, was what you initially I'm really disappointed in how this conversation tonight has gone because consistently, I want to put the affidavit in your hand and ask you to please review it line by line and point out to us the conversations you had with your department heads. Osprey's been with you for 10 years. Who else do they know? This is not transparent, and you need to get your game on.
Is there anybody else from the public who would like to?
Rick Rower, 1537 Fairfield Beach Road. One quick comment. I'm a little confused. How is it more expensive to test the pile to build the berm around the water treatment plant than it is to test the pile around, the berm around the pile? Isn't it the same testing?
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment?
Thank you. Carolyn Trubuco, 111 Lookout Drive South. In listening, in listening to this, it's pretty clear to me, it's not just one problem, it's four separate but related problems. There's a health issue, a personnel issue, which involves perhaps a criminal investigation, a financial issue, and then a public trust issue. And to your question of where do we go from here, how do I make the townspeople happy? I would suggest you give each of these four issue stakeholders the task of developing their own timeline. And then out of four separate timelines, you can harmonize them to better understand the complexity of the problem at hand. I like the fact you've given the health issue to our head of the Department of Health working with the state. There is comfort in that. I believe the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education, the PTAs will take some comfort in that. I believe the stakeholders need a seat at that table, too, to understand who were the consultants, how does it, how do we trust them? The personnel issue, that's a, that's going to be a Justice Department issue. I suggest you look at all of your big D department heads and how they function as a result of this. I think they have a lot of autonomy and a lot of independence, and perhaps we're operating with a system of government where we give everyone a lot of, a lot of space, and we're missing some of the natural points of overlap and perhaps oversight that comes from overlap. From a financial issue, I'm delighted to hear there's going to be an independent audit. Financials often echo the operations. They're, they're an important component of any operational concerns or criminality. You do see it by tracking the numbers. And then finally, the public trust. And that's the important one. I would suggest less bickering and perhaps a little more, to the extent there is out there. I have read the affidavits. I've read everything, imagine that. I've read everything that there is to read. I'm on the social media pages. To me, this is the most fragile piece that we're at, is that restoring the public trust. I think you have community leaders who perhaps might be able to lend a watchful eye, who can come in and say, okay, tell me what you've done. And out of that, you build up to a point of consensus of, here's what we need to see to be comfortable again. We're not alone. This isn't the first time. I'm studying Masters of Public Administration at Sacred Heart, full disclosure. I've looked at 36 different case studies of crises around the country. We have a lot of great instructors and knowledgeable people around town. I would tap into them. I would tap into the universities and ask for some case studies of how do we work our way out of it? We know the crisis. We're moving into the remediation, and from there, we have to get to the recovery. There's a way to do it. And I encourage you to bring all the resources you can bear to it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Heather Dean, 919 Stilson Road in Fairfield. I concur completely with Carolyn Trubuco. I think that she summarized exactly what I was thinking much more concisely and succinctly. I particularly appreciated her comment regarding community leaders and neighborhood leaders. And I think that it's a valuable tool to have as far as getting the word out. And I'd like to take it a step further. I was shocked, as everyone else was, about this really egregious betrayal of trust in the DPW. And having served on the RTM and having chaired the Public Works Committee, it just, it's near and dear to my heart. So I'm, I'm very disappointed. But I would like to thank you, Mr. Tatro, for getting the information out there after the fact, for continually and consistently getting the facts to us, the data to us. There's a lot of it that I don't quite understand. A lot of the testing information, I don't understand. I've reached out to get more clarity to understand it. And that is certainly on me, and I certainly would recommend even doing more with that regard, as far as continuing to build the public trust. And I want to thank you for getting that out, and I will continue to share that information with my following. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Any following comments here?
No, not at this time.
All right. Then with that, moving on to item 10. Hear and discuss personal status. May I have a motion to go into private executive session?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I believe that private executive session includes Mr. Emmett Hipson.
People who are working hand in hand with the developers who aren't giving that information back of the heads up, hey, guys, it looks like we're going to be over on all three projects. It's, because the developers claim that they've been on this many months.
The WPCA board voted on certainly one of the projects last October. So I would turn to Mr. Bates and say, what updates has the WPCA Commission received since then?
None.
And why not?
The appropriation was done. I mean, that was it. I mean, as far as we were concerned, the project was moving forward.
Well, we're up at the 11th hour, needing to kind of approve these things at this point.
I don't understand the question.
Well, it's, this, this is a WPCA project. You sit on that, that board.
So, yeah, I sit on the board. I'm not the, I'm not the first selectman. No, I mean, the engineers aren't calling me. I go to a meeting, I get what's put in front of me by your department heads. How's this a reflection on my abilities?
Because it's, it's your board, man. That's what you're doing. You should be reviewing that.
Yeah, I get what's given to me by your department heads.
That's what your board does.
I can't believe you're trying to pass the buck here.
I'm not passing the buck. Buck, in this case, it lands right there.
Manage your department heads.
And manage your board, man.
So, and I think that's a ridiculous accusation. And I would just say that, again, this falls on an individual who was placed on administrative leave, who was updating and attends those meetings to talk about the size and the scope of this project. Grants are tied to this, engineering's tied to this, conservation's tied to this, and all of these, the engineers who are working with these department heads, nobody, not one of them said, hey, listen, we got to bring this back to the WPCA to let them know, we're going to be coming to them with a funding request, which we're going to need to vote on by October. We'll let them know, we'll let them know in September. And they knew for months. That's all I got.
Yeah, that's why I'm expecting that the WPCA Commission is going to stay on top of the three biggest projects they've got. This is very important for us. So, anything else?
I would, I think that's an accountability thing which falls at your feet because they're your department heads who are managing the project. The board is required to, they're there to get notifications and updates from the people who are actually paid, full-time employees working on the projects. To the board's knowledge, they thought everything was moving along okay.
And in the last year, they didn't ask?
Last year, they approved the amount, the amount.
Not for all three projects?
The amount doubled by 100% from one of the projects.
300.
300%.
All right. And does the board know why yet?
Engineering. That's what we were told at the Board of Finance meeting.
But what about a WPCA meeting?
That came out in last week's WPCA meeting as well. That was the first time we heard about it.
Just engineering? That's the explanation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't believe that. Can't believe it's that's.
I'm not an engineer. Again, I'm relying on what I'm being told.
I'm going to ask the folks in this room to please be quiet and let us finish our discussion. I believe the RTM has the same concept.
So let's get them in front of us, and let's get these questions answered.
That makes good sense to me. All right, then the, one item I have is that I was trying to get some guidance and opinion from the Ethics Commission last week, and I was informed that we still have two vacancies. There are two Republican vacancies. So the Ethics Commission can't do their job until we get those filled. So if you guys would please bring forward some appointments for that, that would be very good.
We've recommended appointments. We did have one to go who had to back out, but we will, we'll go back and make more telephones. Just so the people at home know that it has to be a unanimous decision for an ethics appointment between all three Board of Selectmen members.
Yeah, and the last one you recommended was a Democrat, so we've got two Republican vacancies here that we could really use filled. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.[1738.63]